The 24th meeting of the 23rd Council will please come to order. All council members are present here this evening. At this time, we will have a moment of silence. And during the moment of silence, we will keep in our thoughts and our prayers, the 41st President of the United States, George H.W. Bush, and his family. And followed by this moment of silence, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Council Vice President Harris. Thank you, Council Vice President Harris. Civic Plaza parking passes are provided for members of the public. You can obtain a parking pass from the council staff at the signup table. The council will take a dinner break at approximately 7:00 PM this evening. We want tonight's proceedings to be as civil and as respectful as possible. Please do not make any personal attacks, and please no applause or other outbursts during the meeting. The meeting will go much smoother if we are respectful of one another. At this time, we will go to Item 3. That is Proclamations and Presentations. And the first proclamation will be, or presentation will be, a presentation of employee recognition awards to Susan Rice and Jim Sader. And to read those will be Counselor Penio.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Let me see if I have them here. Okay, do we have Ms. Susan Rice here and Jim Sadler? Are you here this evening? Why don't you come on down to the podium? I'm going to go ahead and read these recognitions. These are actually, I think we did this at our last City Council meeting, and you two weren't available, but, you know, the, thank you. They're really recognizing folks for going above and beyond the color duty. And you're recognized by either your peers or your supervisors, or actually, I think you can actually be submitted by a, just a person in general. So anyway, Ms. Susan Rice, she's with Program and Facility Manager for Parks and Recreation. She was nominated under the category of performance and innovation by a fellow employee. Susan Rice has taken the reins at the Balloon Fiesta Park. She has increased programming and rentals more than 300%. She is an incredibly dedicated city employee that tirelessly serves the public and has brought fun-out-of-the-box events to the park, on top of normal activities and events. In addition to the Balloon Fiesta Park, Susan also oversees the Esperanza Bicycle Safety Education Center. That's near and dear to my heart, which is an incredible resource for the public and those in need of bicycles. Susan's work ethic and dedication are inspirational and contagious to her coworkers, which leads to work, which leads work to being completely more efficiently. Thank you, Susan. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Did you want to say a few words?
I'm very flattered and humbled by this recognition. This is totally unexpected, and it's wonderful. I really appreciate it. And I just, all I can do is just reiterate, managers only as good as their team. So, a lot of what you're reading there is due to the people I work with, and I thank them.
That's why you were nominated. Thank you. Mr. Jim Sadler, he is Assistant Superintendent of Parks and Recreation, Open Space Division. His cat, he was nominated under the category of accomplishment by his supervisor. In September, the city's Golden Open Space Trail System was completed. After 12 years of work led by Jim Sadler, over 15 miles of trails have been built. Jim spent years planning the trail network, recruiting and organizing volunteers and staff, and promoting this pristine and historic section of 1,100 acres of open space preservation lands. Through Jim's leadership, over 4,461 volunteer hours and 74 volunteer projects were organized to complete the construction. The Golden Open Space is where visitors can experience wide-open vistas in every direction with sweeping views of five different mountain ranges, and it would not be possible without the dedicated work of Jim. Thank you, Jim. As one of your volunteers. Do you want to say a few words?
Well, thank you very much. This means a lot. And I've enjoyed working for the Open Space Division, and we have a great staff. Couldn't have done any of this work without our staff.
Thank you. Why don't you come up and receive your awards?
We have two proclamations this evening. The first proclamation will be read by Counselor Winter. Counselor Winter.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Gibson's going to help me on this. And this is a proclamation supporting the UNM Health Sciences Healing Communities Grant Application. Ryan Cangelos, he's the Director of Economic and Community Development with UNM Health Sciences, will be accepting the proclamation this evening, so come on up. So, it starts. Whereas the Federal Helping to End Addiction and lessen Substance Use Disorders Act of 2018 provides funding for better education, prevention, management, and treatment options for pain and addiction, increased treatment for substance use disorder, improved tracking of opioid prescriptions on Medicare Part D, expand and clarify Medicaid's options for treating beneficiaries with substance use disorder, and improve data used to evaluate treatments for opioid use disorder, and... Whereas the National Institute of Health, National Institute of Drug Abuse, is funding a grant to determine if an integrated set of evidence-based interventions within healthcare, behavioral health, justice systems, and community organizations can work to decrease opioid overdoses and to prevent and treat opioid use disorders, and...
And whereas, only a fraction of people with opioid use disorders receive any treatment, and of those, less than half receive the medications that are universally acknowledged to be the standard of care, or they receive treatment for too short a duration. And whereas, NIDA will work with the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, SAMSA, to launch a multi-site implementation research study to identify the ideal sequence and duration of treatment within communities, titled Healing Community Study. And whereas, the Healing Community Study will look at the effectiveness of a coordinated continuum of care to test the integration of prevention, overdose treatment, and medically assisted treatment in a coordinated array of settings, to include emergency departments, criminal justice systems, specialty care, including prenatal care and behavioral health. And whereas, the UNM Health Sciences Center is responding to the grant opportunity issued by NIDA and SAMSA. And whereas, the proposed UNM HSC project proposes to intervene at all levels, from changing prescribers' behavior so that fewer opioid prescriptions are written, to increasing systematic distribution of naloxone, to formalizing linkages between the justice system, healthcare, and behavioral health, and...
Whereas the City of Albuquerque and Burnile County continue to have high levels of substance misuse in one of the highest per capita rates of overdose death in the United States, and are committed to reducing the number of individuals living with mental and substance use disorders. And whereas all city and county residents will benefit from the research and programming proposed by the UNM HSC application, BIP proclaimed that the council, the governing body of the City of Albuquerque, is hereby expressing its support for UNM HSC's grant application and the resulting study. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. And I want to thank Counselors Gibson and Winter for spearheading this, and for all of our counselors here today, supporting this. As you guys know, opioid abuse and overdose deaths are way out of control here in New Mexico. Even one death is too much, and we have many throughout communities. And so, the UNM Health Sciences is very grateful that you are supporting us in this grant application, and we will be in touch with you with regards to the results. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Come on up.
Thank you, Counselor Winter and Counselor Gibson. We have one more proclamation, and that is Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to ask Chief Dow and some of his team from AFR to come down and join us while I introduce this resolution. This is actually a little, a month or so after this event, but you'll see in just a minute the number of people who worked on it and how it took us that long to sort of pull this all together. But while you're coming down, I'll get started. Whereas, Fire Station 5 is located in the heart of our International District, and members of Albuquerque's Fire and Rescue decided to make Halloween 2018 a special year for families in need in that community. On Halloween night, AFR and IAFF Local 244 hosted the first annual haunted, what I hope is annual anyway, I think it will be now, first annual haunted firehouse and Halloween event at Station 5 in partnership with APD, Albuquerque Ambulance, Copper Point Church, Board Up, and Random Acts of Kindness. And whereas, our firefighters organized to receive more than 500 Halloween costumes for needy children in the neighborhoods and provided them free of charge. And then they went farther. IAFF members and AFR leaders volunteered hundreds of hours to purchase, build, paint, create a carnival, which consisted of over a dozen booths with various games and displays, an informational booth from APD, a mini firefighter obstacle course hosted by the Fire Academy. And whereas, our firefighters turned Station 5 into a haunted house where junior firefighters and their families assisted guiding firefighters, I think our CAO, and me, and a whole bunch of us too, as they followed abandoned hose lines through the strange environment of the other realm in search of missing crew members. And whereas, more than 700 community residents joined in this family-free event, providing a safe and memorable Halloween experience for families who might otherwise have missed that opportunity. BIP proclaimed by the council, the governing body of our city, that we hereby honor and appreciate the service of each of the firefighters and volunteers listed in this proclamation, who saw a need and the opportunity to create this experience for our city's children. And hereby directs the chief of the fire department to post a copy of this proclamation in Station 5 and to share it with each of the members who aided in this project. And chief, you'll see, there are almost 100 folks here that your department and IAFF put together for us, who volunteered their time and their efforts, and a whole lot of personal money and time to make that an event. It was a tremendous event. I've never seen something like it with that many kids out. And so, many of those children don't have a chance to participate because they don't have the ability to have the costumes or a safe place to go. And your firefighters stepped up and did that on their own accord, and I can't say enough for what that means for our city. So, thank you. It's a great community effort, and I hope we get to do it again.
Chief, before you make any comments, Counsel Vice President Harris has a comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Fire, Station 5 and Station 11, you know, deal with the East Central Corridor, which you guys are oftentimes up in my neck of the woods, too. We see you bank. You all kind of help each other. But chief, I heard a statistic, and I thought it was really remarkable, that not only is Station 5, I think, is it the busiest station in the city? Or is Station 11?
Certainly, Station 11 is the busiest right now.
And Station 5 is number two?
Station 5 is number two. They battle it out every year. Yes, sir.
Okay. And isn't it also true that Station 5 and Station 11 are the busiest, one of the two busiest fire stations in the country?
Counsel President, Counselor Harris, yes, that's true. Actually, the Firehouse Magazine does a survey every year, and Engine 11 was the 11th busiest engine company in the country this last year.
Wow. And Station 5's right up there, right?
And Station 5 is in the top 30. Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, that's just incredible, what these guys do for our city. So, thank you so much.
Chief, would you tell us a little about this, and maybe just wave at a few of the folks that you've got down here with you? That's not nearly everybody, but I know we couldn't take everybody out of service or get them in today. No. This is the, Counselor, this is not everybody that we have here. We, this is the group that actually made all of this happen, though. And it's Captain Carlos Sotero, Lieutenant Will McMullen, and Battalion Chief Santos Garcia were three of the gentlemen that were pivotal in making this happen. Plus, all of the other members that are here as well. And we've got some of the members from Engine 5 right now, getting a nice break for a little bit. And I just can't tell you how proud I am of that. And it's an amazing group effort. I know that there was some discussion about that this was my idea, and I want to tell you that this was not my idea. We had a discussion in a battalion chiefs' meeting a few months ago, and we talked about, let's just get more involved. And these men and women just took it from there. And they went to the extremes, and it was absolutely outstanding, and I could not be more proud of them. So, I just want this, this City Council and the city to understand, if you're looking for compassion in this community, you don't have to look any further than a firehouse. And what they did was absolutely amazing, especially for that community. Just like city counselors, you own your district. Well, these men and women, they own their district. Their firehouse is their home away from home, and that response area is theirs. For 48 hours, that's theirs. So, the community is theirs. And just like you said, Counselor, they saw the need. You see those, those young kids, and they don't have a place to go trick-or-treat safely, but they do now. And they're going to do every single year from now on. We'll make sure of that. So, thank you very much. I'm going to turn it over to IAFF Local 244, Chief Stewart, Captain Albert Ortega, who has a few words.
Thank you, chief. Like chief said, my name is Alberto Ortega. I'm the chief steward for IAFF 244, and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of our General President, Diego Aroncon. He sends his regrets for not being able to attend tonight. As we all know, he's very busy, and his duties have pulled him elsewhere tonight. He extends his gratitude and thanks to Chief Dow, as does the rest of the executive board, and to his whole staff. Truly was an amazing partnership to pull this off, and thank you, chief. I'd also like to thank the firefighters and officers at Station 5, Station 11, and the surrounding neighborhood who pulled together to get this event off the ground. It truly was an amazing, an amazing event. I've never seen a community and a station come together like this. It was breathtaking, and I hope, like you said, Counselor, and Chief Dow, that this really becomes an annual event, not only in that community, but different communities throughout the city. I think this is something that can spread like wildfire. Hopefully, not like wildfire. And also, a special thank you to Counselor Davis and the rest of the council members for supporting this event. This really wouldn't have not gone up without your support. So, again, thank you. And on behalf of General President Aroncon, we all thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you all for your service, and thanks to everybody else and our other firefighters and IAFF folks who are going to watch this online later or can see this. We have a copy of it. And I want to say thanks to the folks at Station 5. After this, Chief Garcia was kind enough to take me out on a ride-along, show me a little bit about how things are moving and how much they move, and how hard it is to work in that battalion, in that area, that's so busy. But it shows you all the importance, and I hope everybody has as much... I know we have as much appreciation as I do for the work of our AFR. So, gentlemen, come join us, and come get your proclamation.
I believe one more individual wanted to say a few words. I see a written five-page speech.
Thank you, councilman. I was informed by my superiors as I walked through the door that I'll be speaking tonight. So, just a few notes. I'd just like to say it was absolutely humbling and encouraging to be part of this event. I think we sometimes have the false impression that people are unwilling to go the extra mile for their neighbor. And the absolute outpouring of resources and effort when this idea was put forth was truly humbling, both from sponsors, our fire admin, absolutely supportive, our local union and the union president, and especially the firefighters, particularly at Station 5. As you mentioned, we are one of the busiest firehouses in the country, and I had absolutely no qualms about asking my guys to put in a little extra because I know the caliber of men that work at, men and women that work at Station 5, and they absolutely rose to the occasion. And just like Fire Chief said, we couldn't be prouder of their efforts. And special thanks to Chief Dow, President Aroncon, especially Battalion Chief Santos Garcia and Captain Carlos Sotero here. They were absolutely essential to this organization, and we had a blast. I hope the citizens had a blast. Chief couldn't have been, put it better. Station 5, Engine 5, is near and dear to my heart. I absolutely take ownership for that district and take my responsibility to those people seriously, and that everybody in the station feels the same way. So, thank you so much, and like you said, we hope to continue next year, so.
Okay, we are now under presentation of gifts. I would like to present gavels to the 2018 Committee Chairs and thank them for their service this year. The first gavel will go to Counselor Jones, the Chair of the Committee of the Whole. Would you like to say a few words, Counselor Jones?
Thank you. It was a pleasure, and I think we took pretty good care of the city with the help of all the other counselors in the administration. So, thank you.
The next gavel will go to the Chair of Finance and Government Operations Committee, and that is Counselor Penio. Counselor Penio.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate it. It was a huge learning experience, and I hope we did the city well. Thank you.
Thank you. The next gavel will go to Counselor Borrego, portraying the Land Use and Planning and Zoning Committee. Counselor Borrego. Counselor Borrego.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for giving me that opportunity, and I look forward to... This is my first gavel, so I look forward to several of these.
Thank you. I want to also thank Counselor Harris for serving as the Vice President of the Council for 2018.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. And we got elected together. We've been serving together, and we've oftentimes spearheaded a lot of bipartisan initiatives. And I want to thank you for serving with you, and I think we've done a good job.
Thank you. Counselor Harris.
And, Mr. President, I would like to thank you for serving as President of the Council during this very first year of the Keller administration. And I think you and I, as well as the other counselors, have worked really hard, have done good things for the city.
Thank you. Counselor Vice President? And I will be as brief as the others and say thank you, and it's been an honor to serve. Okay, next, we are going to other business. That is the election of President and Vice President. A memo regarding the election of officers is in your iPad. I will take nominations for President. If after the second round there is not a majority vote selecting one individual, I will make a motion to reopen the floor for nominations. If there are two or more nominees, the clerk of the council will call roll in order by council district. At this time, I will open nominations for council president, and I'd like to nominate Counselor Penio. Are there any other nominations? Counselor Benton.
Mr. President, I move that Counselor Penio be elected by acclamation.
If there are no, if there are no objections, we have a motion, and a second, that Counselor Penio be elected as council president for this next year. All those in favor, spray a V and say yes. Yes. Those opposed? Congratulations, Counselor Penio.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I really appreciate, I appreciate my colleagues putting, placing their confidence in me, and I look forward to working with you all this year in a nonpartisan approach to move our wonderful city forward, and I look forward to working with the administration as well. And I did want to say that I asked my family to be here this evening, so they're all in the back, rooting me on. I have, I have my brother Sammy, who I'd actually like to ask to stand up and give a special recognition to. He's the most, he's the inspiration in my life. Thank you, Sam. And my grandbabies in the back. Thank you. Thank you, counselors.
Thank you, Madam President. Okay, let's move on for the election of Vice President. I will now take nominations for Vice President. If after the second round there is not a majority vote selecting one individual, I will make a motion to reopen the floor for nominations. If there are no, if there are two or more nominees, the clerk of the council will call roll in order of council district. I'd like to nominate Counselor Borrego. Do we have any other nominations?
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Counselor Gibson.
Okay, we do have another nomination. We have Counselor Gibson. We will now have a roll call vote, unless there's any other nominations.
District 1 Counselor Sanchez.
Borrego.
District 2 Counselor Benton.
Counselor Gibson.
District 3 Counselor Penio. District 4 Counselor Winter. District 5 Counselor Borrego. Thank you. District 6 Counselor Davis. District 7 Counselor Gibson. Thank you. District 8 Counselor Jones. District 9 Counselor Harris.
Borrego.
Congratulations, Counselor Borrego. The vote is, excuse me, 6-3.
Counselor Borrego, Council Vice President Borrego, congratulations.
Thank you. And I want to say I'm honored to be nominated with the esteemed Counselor Gibson as well. So, thank you. I look forward to serving.
Thank you. Let's go and move on to election of Chair of the Committee of the Whole. The same rules will be applicable. At this time, I'd like to nominate Counselor Jones. Are there any other nominations? Counselor Davis. Okay, we have two nominees. That is Counselor Jones and Counselor Benton. Madam Clerk, call roll. Counselor Jones.
District 2 Counselor Benton. District 3 Counselor Penio.
Counselor Jones.
District 4 Counselor Winter.
Counselor Jones.
District 5 Counselor Borrego.
Counselor Jones.
District 6 Counselor Davis. District 7 Counselor Gibson.
Benton.
District 8 Counselor Jones. District 9 Counselor Harris.
Jones.
That's a 6-3 vote. Counselor Jones, congratulations.
Congratulations, Counselor Jones.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to Item C, Approval of the Committee Appointments. Counsel President Penio. Council President Penya.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of deferring the approval of the committee appointments to the December 17th council meeting and that the current makeup of the council committee remains in place until the new committee appointments are approved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes.
Thank you, Council President Penya. There, we are now on Item 4, Economic Development Discussion. There is none this evening and now we are on Item 5, Administrative Question and Answer Period. Councilors, are there any questions for the administration? Seeing none, let's move on to Item 6, The Journal. Councilor Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move approval of the last meeting's journal.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of the November 19th Journal. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. That carries unanimously. We are now under communications and introductions. Are there any changes to the letter of introduction? Councilor Benton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing R 106 on tonight's agenda for final action. R 106 is amending committee substitute R 1818 as amended by R 1856 to extend the deadline for committee for public and private entities to conduct an analysis of the 2018 International Energy Conservation Code with the intention to replace the currently adopted 2009 Energy Conservation Code.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilor Harris to, that the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing R 106 on tonight's agenda for final action. That requires two-thirds votes. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. That carries. Councilor Penya. Or Council President Penya, excuse me.
Where are we on the FGO? I'm last.
I can go and move it.
Okay, thank you.
I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing R 107 on tonight's agenda for final action. R 107 is establishing legislative and budget priorities for the Council of Albuquerque for the 2019 New Mexico State Legislature.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilor Benton. Any questions? This will require two-thirds votes. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. That carries unanimously. Councilor Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing R 108 on tonight's agenda for final action. R 108 is approving the appointment of a director to fill a vacancy on the governing body of the Volterra Public Improvement District caused by the resignation of a certain director.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules for the purpose of placing R 108 on tonight's agenda for final action. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. That carries unanimously. Councilor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of introducing R 110 and placing it on the December 17th council agenda for final action. R 110 is consenting to the assignment of the master development agreements for the Mesa del Sol Tax Increment Development Districts 1 through 5.
We have a motion and a second by Councilor Jones. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. That carries unanimously. Councilor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of introducing R 111 and placing it on the December 17th council agenda for final action. R 111 is consenting to the assignment of the master development agreements for the Mesa del Sol Public Improvement Districts 1 through 5.
We have a motion and a second by Councilor Jones. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. That carries unanimously. Councilor Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move approval of the letter of introduction.
We have a motion and a second by Councilor Borrego for the approval of the letter of introduction. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. That carries unanimously. We are now on reports of committee. Council President Penya.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance and Government Operations Committee met on Monday, November 26, 2018 and reports out the following items. In the matter of EC 236, 237, 240, 241, OC 13 and 14, that receipt be noted. In the matter of EC 238, that it be approved and acted on at the meeting in which it was reported. In the matter of EC 242 and 266, that they be approved. In the matter of OC 37 and R 78, that they be without recommendation. In the matter of R 89, 90, 91, 92, and 93, that they do pass. In the matter of R 98, that it do pass and be acted on at the meeting which it is reported. In the matter of R 104, that it do pass as amended and be acted on in the meeting which it is reported. I make a motion to accept the committee reports.
We have a motion and a second by Councilor Benton to accept the committee report. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. That carries unanimously. We are now on deferrals and withdrawals. I'd like to move EC 215, the Mayor's Appointment of Kara Grant to the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board. I move deferral until the January 7th meeting. We have a motion and a second by Councilor Harris. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. That carries unanimously. We are now on the consent agenda. Are there any changes to the consent agenda? Councilor Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move approval of the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. That carries unanimously. We are now under general public comment, Item 10. There will be a two-minute time limit. The light on the podium will be green for the first minute and a half, then a bell will ring and the light will turn yellow indicating you have 30 seconds remaining. When the light turns red, the bell will ring one more time indicating your time has expired. And if you would please respect the two-minute time limit and I will call the first five names. Once your name has been called, there is seating available for you here in the front. Don Schrader, Simon Polakowski, Daniel Reagan, Chantel Galloway, and Chelsea Van Deventer. Welcome.
Booze, junk food, cocaine, meth, sugar, heroin, cigarettes, all are awful addictions. But no addiction is more harmful than craving much more money, much more stuff than we need. I enjoy having enough, healthy food, one sunny room to live in, a garden for food and flowers. I lived well all of 2017 on $5,528 for my total expenses, rent, food, et cetera, far less than the US poverty level for me as a single person. The United States has less than 5% of the world's people, but the US steals and hogs 25% of the world's wealth. How much worse the environment would be if all the over 7 billion people on earth now and billions to come consumed, traveled, and polluted as most USAans? Why hog much more than my fair share in the world family? Freedom is not having and not wanting much stuff I do not need. My time is more precious than millions of dollars. My close relationships more precious than mansions full of stuff. I treasure wisdom, health, deep conversations, dear friends, living and dead, men I have been in love with. I aim to live truth as best I see it. I refuse to be a spectator in the bleachers.
Simon Polakowski.
Council President, Council. Mr. Schrader is really the only fiscal conservative we have here in New Mexico. True one. If U-Public is still in charge of public access then, and not compliant with their contract, fulfilling their contractual obligations, then a fraud is being perpetuated on the city of Albuquerque. I just wanted that said and done. Today, Monday, being, you had a moment of silence for the late President George W. Bush. I would have played, I had a show on Monday nights. I would have played him talking about the assassination of President Kennedy and chuckling as he goes lone gunman. I would have played that at the beginning. I would have played it again and I would have played it at the end of the program and I would have asked for public comment. People call in, is this man chuckling? And if he is, why is he chuckling? And I would say, you know, maybe this is a family trait. I would have played his son laughing about weapons of mass destruction. All these things, you know, are on the web and these are some of the things I would do when I had my program. But fortunately, we don't have a public access station. There is no controversy. We have sanitized, I don't know, schlock, I love what people tell me. And that said and done, you know, I kind of blame Mr. Schrader for the beginnings of public access's misfortunes. He did, you know, when he exposed himself, he exposed all the shortcomings of our media here. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Reagan, followed by Chantel Galloway.
Council President Sanchez and Council Members, my name is Dan Reagan. I agree with Councilor Davis's opinion piece in the Journal last week. Ed Harness should be approved. In that piece, Pat mentions that there are some, there was some failure to comply with key requirements in the ordinance and settlement agreement mainly through regular reports to the council. On the other side of that coin, I note that the council took eight months to respond to a request from the P O B to properly fund a critically, critical IT position. The council was also concerned with three P O B positions being vacant, but the council spent months not acting on the replacements submitted by the P O B for those openings. I think that accountability works best when it works both ways as a two-way street. The council might want to have, to own their own part in the struggles of this P O B for the first four years of its existence. To turn to Mr. Harness himself, he handled the adaptation necessary to conform to the CASA's requirements, which were put in place only six months after the P O B was stood up. He dealt with two consecutive years of intentional non-compliance by the APD with the CASA's regs. He was able to meet most of the cities and met all of CASA's performance and standards of, standards and requirements. He was acknowledged by the DOJ and its monitor as doing an outstanding job. He has been put forth by the P O B as unanimously endorsed for another term. He has shown that he has the capacity to adapt, to lead, and to accomplish. This city is still at a critical juncture vis a vis a solid sense of safety for our neighborhoods and our businesses. If Mr. Harness is willing to serve another appointed term, knowing all he knows about the job, then I submit to you that this city and the P O B.
Thank you, sir. Your term, your time has expired, not your term.
120 seconds.
Excuse me, your time has expired.
Is not very much.
Next speaker, Chantel Galloway.
Hi, thank you. President Sanchez and Council Members, my name is Chantel Galloway and I'm here to discuss OC 18-8. First, I wish to make clear that although I serve on the police oversight board, I am addressing you as an individual and not speaking on behalf of the full board. Last Thursday, Councilor Gibson raised some questions to our director. Three of the four were clear and understandable. I know the answers to those questions. One question I'm sure is easily answerable as well, but I am unclear as to why it was raised and would like to hear Director Harness's response. Because of OMA and the legal issues surrounding our ability to dialogue freely with members of council, as well as the timing between when those questions were raised in tonight's meeting, that question has not yet been answered. For this reason and this reason only, I'm asking council to defer a vote on OC 18-8 for an additional two weeks. I also want to be clear that this request is in no way indicative of my position as to whether or not Director Harness should be reconfirmed as the Director of the CPOA. I would simply like to be sure that the thoughtful questions raised by Councilor Gibson are given the same thoughtful response. Thank you.
Council Harris.
Yes, what's your name again?
Mr. Galloway.
Yes, you know, this is a very important role that we play, but right now, there's a separation of powers issue, there's a federal court involved, and there's a hearing coming up on December 7th. And, and it seems that we're kind of in a corner because a federal judge, you know, you're gonna have to respect what, what they want us to do. So, I'd like to perhaps be more deliberative, but again, like you, not with any prejudice or negative feelings towards Mr. Harness, just to have questions answered and think about these things, but we just might not have that option.
I understand that as well. It was pretty late in the game.
Yep, thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Galloway. Chelsea Van Deventer.
Thank you. Thank you, President Penya and the rest of the council. I am also up here speaking as, not for the police oversight board, but as an individual who serves on the board. Nothing I say can be taken as the position of the board. I would also like to ask you to defer in order to allow the time to make a recommendation that the board be able to consider questions recently raised to it regarding the executive director and his contract and whether they should affect the way the board looks at this position. We received some questions last Thursday. We felt that they, or not we felt, I felt that they raised possible issues that should be discussed and considered amongst the board, but unfortunately, because the OMA prohibits us from having conversations absent a noticed meeting or a notice of a quorum, we can't do that. But we do have a special meeting set tomorrow with this agenda item already properly listed. So I do think that we can appropriately and legally have those discussions amongst the board and I would like to, I would like to be able to do that. I would like to be able to be deliberative. I would, yeah, like, like the opportunity to make a recommendation that the board take some more time to consider these things.
Thank you. Valerie St. John.
Good evening, President Sanchez and City Councilors. My name is Valerie St. John. I'm also on the police oversight board and I am just speaking on behalf of myself, but I'd like to also mention that I am also Chair of the Case Review Committee. I'm asking you to defer Director Harness's appointment for the reason for this request is, you know, I know this is late in the game, but we have so many unanswered questions. And I'm also going to send our attorney Tina Gooch an email requesting some type of action so that we could, we can communicate, so we can converse, because right now, we're kind of on the outside and we don't really have anybody to talk to. So anyway, that's why I'm asking for you to defer this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. St. John. Next speaker is Mike Alvarez. Followed by Victor Dodson, followed by Tad Nemenski.
Thank you, Council. I want to take the time, this time to say thanks to everybody that took the time to go vote and make the voting capability as high as it got. And I also want to thank all the members that I worked for and helped me, helped us succeed in the voting capabilities. And I hope, now we're gonna be working for the city of voting and I hope that the voting ends up as good or better than the clerk's office voting took place. So I want to say thank you to everybody that got off the couch and went to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Victor Dodson, and the last speaker on general public comment will be Tad Nemenski. Welcome, Victor.
Thank you, President Sanchez and City Council Members. My name is Victor Dodson and I'm here to support and raise awareness for wheelchair basketball, specifically the ABQ Kings, which is Albuquerque hometown team that has been practicing and playing, but they practice at Grace Church at 6901 San Antonio Drive. And this Friday, I'm organizing a free admission event. It's a family positive event. We're gonna start, the doors open at 7:00 PM. We're gonna have a film, which is called The Rebound, and it is a premiere screening of an award-winning documentary here in Albuquerque. It is about wheelchair basketball. Athletes who have won a championship with the Miami Heat National Wheelchair Basketball Association, talks about their personal life, how they struggle every day on wheelchairs, you know, and all the good things they do, but if you have family members or friends who are on a wheelchair, children, you know, please bring them out. It's free. It's just to support the team and also for people to see that, you know, these folks on wheelchairs are actors, they are leaders, they are athletes, you know, there's just so many things that they are doing with their lives and, you know, that'll happen this Friday and that's really why I'm here. And that's all I have. Thank you.
And what is the location?
It's at 6901 San It's at sixty-nine oh one San Antonio Drive Northeast, eight-seven-one-oh-nine at Grace Church Gym.
And at what time again?
This Friday. Doors open at seven P M., and the film starts at seven-thirty P M.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tad Nemenski. Here is something I want to share with people in Albuquerque. Nobody having got. I'm the one who got both. I just, somebody told me you must have big ball. Well, thanks, buddy. But anyway, here is issue what? People don't know what's going on. Yes, I also file. I name it fifteen. I serve a summons to the city, and it's gonna be a lot more, probably three or four, including director of oversight. I will summons. I amended my lawsuit. So now, gonna be a lot more lawsuit coming up. That's only very first. And I will file in near future, which happened on the November fifth. And also, I discovered I was collecting evidence, and here is I have evidence. Cap Gunderson, Gunderson, his lapel camera being manipulated, well, being edited. I have to A P D access today. I'm not gonna neighbor who allowed me. Now, another. Yes, here is other when it comes to public network manipulating. And also, what is more, most important, temping with evidence from last my meeting.
Thank you. We are now on item eleven announcements. Council President Penya.
Thank you, Mr. President. There will be a Finance and Government Operations Committee meeting on Monday, December tenth at five P M. in the council committee room on the ninth floor.
Councilor Borrego.
Thank you, Mr. President. The December twelfth land use planning and zoning committee meeting is canceled. Next LUP's meeting is scheduled for January sixteenth, twenty nineteen.
The following Public Improvement District Boards of Directors will meet on Friday, December the seventh, in the council committee room on the ninth floor. At ten A M., Salteo P I D. One-thirty P M., Boulder's P I D. At two P M., Valterra P I D. And at two-thirty P M., the Lower Petroglyph P I D. So if you have nothing to do on that day, you're invited to any one of those four meetings. We are on item twelve, public hearings, so there is none this evening. We will go to item thirteen approvals, and that is item B. O C H, the renewal of contract with Mr. Edward Harness, Director of the Civilian Police Oversight Agency. Do I hear motion? We have a motion and a second, and the council's authority in this matter is limited to confirmation of the C P O, C P O A director for the recommendations of the police oversight board. While the P O B appears to be recommending certain terms of the director's contract, those matters are not before the council this evening. And we have one individual that has signed up to speak.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the council. My name is Peter Simonson. I'm the executive director for the A C L U of New Mexico, but I'm here on behalf of A P D Forward, the coalition. I appreciate Councilor Harris's acknowledgement of the situation that you're under with regard to the renewal of Mr. Harness's contract, that the CASA puts certain obligations on the city. And so maybe my comments will be moot, but I did just want to urge you to renew his contract and just take a moment to look back where we have been with this police oversight body. I've been doing this work with the A C L U for eighteen years now, and I've watched multiple people cycle through our police oversight body. And I can, I can say without any hesitation that under Mr. Harness's watch, this police oversight now board and the C P O A have been among the most trusted police oversight agencies that our city has had in those eighteen years. He has brought a level of professionalism that I think was lacking in the department. Remember the kind of bickering that was taking place on the, on the police oversight commission as we entered into the DOJ's investigation of the department? He's hired a capable and motivated staff. He's addressed the backlog of cases that the department was under, that the C P O A was under. He has, as I said, increased community trust. He's gone out of his way to build and strengthen the CPCs around our city. Under his leadership, I think the C P O A has become one of the bright spots in the city's compliance with the CASA, and so I would strongly urge you to approve his contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Councilor Davis and then Councilor Harris.
I'll pass for general comment.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Simonson? And Mr. Agulark will please correct me if I fumble something here, but I understand that there are some amendments to the ordinance which contemplate that perhaps Mr. Harness shouldn't really be an employee of the city because that makes him ultimately supervised by Serrita here, and that's, might not be the best. And so we might go to a situation where the, Mr. Harness could be an at-will employee or an, some sort of at-will position and be supervised by the board. And I think if, if that happens, although that's down the road, there could be amendments. Did I get that right, Mr. Agulark?
Uh, Councilor Sanchez?
Yeah. Go ahead and proceed.
Councilor Harris. The, my understanding is that the discussion is to make the position an independent contractor of the board as opposed to an employee one way or the other, whether it's at-will or, or, you know, classified or unclassified internally within the city.
Okay, independent contractor, thanks. And what that would mean is that some of the concerns that the, that the board members expressed today, that could be addressed later after they have the opportunity to consider employment terms and so forth, or independent contract terms. So, you know, sort of take it out of our hands, and if, if they want to address that with Mr. Harness, they can at a later time. You think that's an appropriate kind of observation?
Mr. President, members of the council, yes, I would agree. I think that's exactly the role of the P O B.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Davis. Are there any questions? Councilor Gibson, and then Councilor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President, or ex-president. Former, I mean, late president. I just wanted to, someone mentioned that I had met with Mr. Harness today, and I did to ask him a few questions. There were a few other people there. He answered them very forthrightly. I, and all the P O B members know at least some of the questions that, that were asked. So I'm, I'm very satisfied. I appreciate the work that he's put into, to running the C P O A, helping out the, the P O B, the work that he's done with the CPCs, and I'm, I will be definitely supporting him. Thank you.
Councilor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think I'll pass until we get on full discussion of the legislation.
This basically is our full discussion right now.
Oh, ki-dok. If you're ready, I'm ready. Just a question, Ms. Nyer. Does the administration have a stance on this?
Council President Sanchez, Councilor Jones, you know, to, to Councilor Harris's point, we feel that because the job of the C P O A in general and Mr. Harness specifically is to oversee the police department that does report to me, that it would be improper for us to take a position on this issue.
Thank you. Councilor Davis, then Council Vice President Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I, my comments are more appropriate for general discussion, and I appreciate that we're there now. You know, as Mr. Reagan said, I sort of had a few comments in the paper earlier this week, but I just want to extend those to some specific points here. You know, I think we've, this council has done our, our job. We've deferred this. We had a public study session, both on the proposed amendments to the P O B ordinance that we will be considering down the road here very soon. And we also have been talked at length about Mr. Harness and about the role of the C P O A director, and it's opened up some conversations about where we are now. I think this bigger conversation really is about, I, I take a little exception to Mr. Simonson, not that he, he's well-versed in this, but I think the CASA does not require this council to rubber stamp the recommendation of the C P O A, because the CASA also in that same section or same paragraph says that the C P O A will be accountable and independent, but accountable to the city council. And I think we have to do our job to be sure that as they expend the budget that they requested and that we've approved, and that the performance that they, the, the charge and the authority that this city council has given them through that ordinance is being exercised properly, and that is the process we've undertaken. I have some concerns that in the communication from the C P O A to the city council recommending Mr. Harness, that they extended beyond their authority to maybe recommend some financial encouragement or financial changes to that sort of contract or position, however it's situated, that are not appropriate. And that, to me, raises more questions about the support the city has given to this independent board in terms of guidance for personnel codes or purchasing, H R compliance and other things that I think we can address with the new director, whomever that is, to be more in compliance. For me, the question is whether the director we needed to build this organization and to set up this system is the same director we need down the road to implement it and these new changes. I think Mr. Harness is. But, Mr. President, I guess, Mr. President, if it's appropriate, I'd like to ask Mr. Harness to come down and answer a couple of questions really quickly ahead of tonight's vote, if that's appropriate.
That'll be fine, Mr. Harness.
Good evening, Council President and council members.
Mr. Harness, thank you. And you've been very patient to sit here through several of these hearings and sort of watch this happen without joining the conversation. But I think your experience here, and this is sort of about the role of the director, if you'll indulge me, I want to ask just a couple of questions about what you see the role of the director and how you fit into that. You've been involved in this process, both here in Albuquerque and in other places for a while. Building an organization like this is not always the same as keeping it implemented. And folks have, I think rightly, argued that perhaps the C P O A is not yet fully compliant. They have still not met all of the statutory requirements, say, for regular and sort of summation reports to the city council and the public on their progress. I think there are some other questions about the support the board needs in H R and other things that can be done. If you were confirmed as director, can you talk to us about your plan to be sure that we meet full compliance for the C P O A and your confidence in doing that?
President, Councilor Sanchez, Councilor Davis, certainly. I can tell you that we have already scheduled all of the quarterly oral reports for twenty eighteen going into twenty nineteen. So in January, there will be an oral report on the fourth quarter of the P O B, C P O A moving forward. I can tell you that we have now our data analytics in place so that the semi-annual reporting will be back on proper path, reporting by probably spring of twenty eighteen, I'm sorry, twenty nineteen. But I can also tell you that there are, there are things that we need to consider as we move forward as far as an agency. There is the, what we need, we believe to be administrative support solely for P O B. The admin support for C P O A and P O B is strained at this point, and the P O B needs their own administrative support. We do believe that, that is well within the budget. As it's, as it's laid out, we can work with H R and create that position. I can also report to you that the members of the P O B Personnel Subcommittee reached out on many occasion during this process in trying to find what was the proper way for my reconfirmation of the contract to be considered. And there was not a lot of guidance or support that was given to members of the oversight board, and thus it led to a lot of the confusion that the council here is facing. We would certainly welcome a, a more collaborative working effort with the city. I think moving forward, we are greatly in compliance as far as the settlement agreement goes. There are some procedural things, as you point out in your op-ed, that are being rectified, and moving forward, we will be in complete compliance with the ordinance and settlement agreement as well.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President, for that. I just want to say, and you beat me to my other question, so that's great, because I don't have to ask. I wanted to say, I think there are some, maybe some unfunded positions or some latitude to fill some of those concerns, and I appreciate you addressing that you're working through that with the board. Mr. President, I just want to close and say this. I think we've finished this, we've had a number of delays here. We've heard testimony from a number of people. I reviewed the minutes of the P O B meeting several months ago. The board voted unanimously to reconfirm Mr. Harness. I noted that in all of the conversations we've had and public testimony we've heard in various hearings and delays, we've yet to hear one person who wanted to go on the record to publicly give us cause not to reconfirm Mr. Harness. And so in my opinion, I believe that delay's not gonna, doesn't serve us nothing but just to delay. I think we should move forward on this vote tonight, and I'll be voting to confirm Mr. Harness so that we have a competent partner on the other side of the table as we move forward to work through the systematic issues that this process has helped us to recognize tonight. So I appreciate the time. Thank you for the discretion.
Thank you, councilor. Are there any other comments? Councilor Benton? And Councilor Harris?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, Mr. Harness, when you said you're reaching out, was that primarily to the council director at the time?
President, Councilor Sanchez, Councilor, Vice President Harris. Regarding what, sir?
Oh, I think you said you were reaching out about how the reappointment should be handled, and you weren't getting a lot of cooperation, response, that kind of thing?
Council President Sanchez, Vice President Harris. No, that was directly with city H R. Members of the Personnel Subcommittee were reaching out directly to city H R for guidance. They did not, they did not have that conversation go through city council.
Okay. And one thing that we've learned through this process is that the CASA actually sort of conflicts the ordinance, so that's caused some confusion. And, and I think we're looking for ways of kind of distancing ourselves from that and having the board kind of take care of its own business, because you're supposed to be independent. So as we go forward, any suggestions that you have in that regard would be helpful.
Certainly, sir.
Councilor Benton, and then Councilor Borrego.
I'll, I'll be supporting the renewal of Mr. Harness's contract. I am concerned, and, and just want to go ahead and, and clear the air on this, that the independence of the C P O A and the P O B from this council does not mean that there's no communication allowed between the C P O A and this council. There's recently been some problems with regard to the, the independent attorney representing the C P O A and our ability of our staff representing us as a council and, and to, to have interactions with those members. And I want to make very clear that that, that's where I draw the line. Independence is one thing, but communication between any member of the C P O A or the police oversight board and this council should be allowable and not questioned by anyone. And I stand strongly behind our staff representative, who I think was extremely disrespected by this attorney that you've got online. I don't know who these people are. I don't know anything about the ins and outs of that, but I want to just say right here and now that we expect to have lines of communication, and that, that doesn't mean control of anyone, but lines of communication between the council and anyone who chooses to speak to the council. and anyone who chooses to speak to the council.
Yeah, I'm sorry. May I?
Go ahead and respond.
Thank you, President, Counselor Sanchez, and Counselor Benton. We share your concerns as well, sir, and we met last week to work out some of those communication issues so that we could move, move beyond that hiccup, which is what it was. It was a hiccup, and we've met with Mr. Aguilar, Ms. Yara, and we're working on getting that straight, so that those communications will happen.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Counselor Borrego, Counselor Peña, and then Counselor Gibson.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Former Chairman, Mr. Late Chairman? You know, I, I want to say that I've sort of looked at this whole issue with kind of fresh eyes, because I haven't been involved, and as a matter of fact, I, I've joked with some of the people from the POB, because I don't even know who they are. They say hello to me, and I'm sort of that, you know, new person. I met Mr. Harness one time in this chambers for about five minutes, and he introduced himself to me. But, you know, I, I really want to say that respectfully to the council and to the POB and to Mr. Harness for taking the time to defer this, because I didn't totally understand all of the ins and outs and all of the nuances of the agreement and how everything related coming in. So, I was really looking at this with sort of fresh eyes. And, you know, I didn't meet with Mr. Harness, who requested a meeting with me, because I really wanted to kind of understand everything before I was sort of influenced in any way. And I want to thank the city attorney for meeting with me on several occasions, so that I could understand it, and I could understand exactly, you know, what the agreement was and how it related back to the city and how it related back to the police department and the CPCs, et cetera. So, I really thank you for that, Mr. Aguilar. I think that part of our, our process in this has been that we found that there was a gap in this agreement in what the council's role was. And I felt somewhat frustrated, in a sense, you know, learning and kind of moving forward. It was like, you know, do we confirm? Do we not confirm? I mean, I heard from the POB, and they said that they supported Mr. Harness, and I respect that, that information. But, you know, there's public money involved, and any time there's public money, to me, I take that very seriously. And regardless of how sort of the contract was set up and, and everything that's, you know, been sort of established from a legal framework, I still take the public money very seriously and how it's being used and, and what reporting comes back to the council, because that is my responsibility as a counselor, is to ensure to the public trust that the money is being used wisely and that people, you know, that it is being, that we are actually doing our job as counselors. So, I, I have to say, for, I know that it was difficult for all of us, because there was a lot of, you know, questions and a lot of side discussions going on, and not, maybe some misunderstandings as well. And so, I, I'm very happy, in a way, that we got to this point, and, you know, I will confirm Mr. Harness. I, I feel like we had to take this time for this dialogue to occur, and so, you know, we could all sort of come to a common place, because we all have the best interest of our city and, you know, I mean, that's, that is what we have in our, in our minds and in our hearts, is that we move forward as a city and that we reach the agreements of the, of the court, and that we eventually, you know, the DOJ is, is sort of moved on maybe to another city. So, you know, I, I want people to understand why I voted in deferral last time, because I still had questions, as Counselor Gibson did. And I got a lot of those questions answered in the last few weeks and in the last few months, and I feel a lot more comfortable. One other thing I wanted to say, and that's really, really important, is I understand that there were names submitted to fill the vacancies of the POB, and I never saw those names, so I just want that to be known. And I've talked to other counselors that said the same thing to me, is they didn't know that those names even existed. So, for the council to, you know, do their job, there were some, there were some issues, and, and I don't want to bring that up, but, you know, there were some staff changes within our office, and those names were never actually submitted to us. So, I think those are really important for the public to understand, is that we weren't, you know, the council was not dragging its feet on this, on those particular appointments. It's just that we never knew that they even existed. So, I want to thank the council for letting us take this time to really look at all of the issues that were part of this, getting to this point tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Peña, Counselor President Peña, and Counselor Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I actually, without regurgitating what Counselor Benton said, I agree, I concur in his remarks. And then, I just really, for, for the public record, I just wanted it, I know, Counselor Davis, you actually did an op-ed, and, you know, I got several calls after the op-ed, and I just, I just want to, you know, clarification. It seems as though it was implied that either myself or the counselors didn't support Mr. Harness, and so, for clarity, I just want to say that initially, I had voted not to defer the appointment, and then, the second go-around, when Counselor Gibson made some really good comments and, and had some really great questions, I agreed with the deferral, because I thought, you know, would, no better time than now to actually get those addressed. But, outside of that, I will be confirming Mr. Harness.
Counselor Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I need to feel like I need to clarify something, and maybe it's, you know, maybe it doesn't need it, but it seems to me that we do need to, to clarify the fact that those names that were coming in to fill positions, right now, I found out today, there are 70 names. There weren't 70 names a few weeks ago. With, with this being in the news, and people are talking about this a little bit more, that's when a lot of these names started coming in. And it was at the, the direction of, of council that they, those names weren't processed until we can get through this, and that makes sense. That makes a lot of sense to me. But I'm, I'm also hearing that, that some of our staff are being blamed, that they're being obstructionists in some way by, by not advancing that, and I just wanted that to get out there, that it's not our staff. Our staff really works by direction of, of council and, under Ms. Yara, but they just don't go off on their own and do things or not do things. They really do take direction from council. So, blame us, don't blame our staff, okay? Thank you.
Counselor Harris?
One quick comment, and sorry to keep this up in the air, but I also want to thank Counselor Benton for pointing out the inappropriate behavior of the board's attorney. And what I mean by that is, probably the least effective thing you can do to an elected official, if you're a lawyer, is threaten them, because that just gets our back up and indicates to us that they probably have bad policy that they're advocating, so they resort to threats. And our, and when you threaten an elected official, their usual position's going to be, well, we have lawyers, take it to court, we're just here to vote on policy. So, anyway, let's hope that we can have better relationships in the future.
Counselor Winter?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'm going to say, I will confirm Mr. Harness, and I think, right now, we're in a really good place. You know, we've, when the, a lot of us were here when the Department of Justice came in, and I'm telling you, it was a rough four years, but I think we're in a really good place, and I think we make this confirmation. We're going to keep moving forward. I think the administration has done a really good job. Everybody's working together, and I think this will help, and we'll just keep moving forward. And just, we have the amendments to the police overs, to the ordinance, and we did defer at Finance Committee, and we would really like people to give input to what's out there. It is out there now, and we would really like input from the Police Oversight Board also. Thank you.
Thank you, and I've got a couple of questions, Mr. Harness, for you. Tonight, we had three members of your board come to the council asking for a two-week deferral, because they had some questions, and there is going to be a meeting tomorrow. There's not been a motion made for that two-week deferral. I don't think the votes are here tonight. What seems to be the issue regarding that two-week deferral? And would you support a two-week deferral if we made a motion to move forward with a two-week deferral?
President, Counselor Sanchez, those remarks were a surprise to me. I understand the timing of the questions and the need for the board to be able to address that in a public meeting, so it was impossible for them to come together to answer the questions as a body. Personally, I do not support a deferral. I believe that it's in the best interest of the agency and the board for my contract to be reconfirmed and for us to move forward.
But currently, your contract is still in place. Is that not correct? You've not been terminated. You're still working as the executive director of this agency.
President, Counselor Sanchez, that's correct.
And also, the city council has not received a, received any, an annual report from the CPOA on community outreach efforts or otherwise since the end of calendar, calendar year 2015. You've just stated that that's going to change. Why was that the case, that we had not received a report since 2015?
President, Counselor Sanchez, I do believe that we did present a 2016 annual report. We will have a 2017 annual report for the board's consideration on the 13th of December, and our data analyst is currently working on the first half-year of 2018, so we will be back on pace. But we did submit a 2016 annual report that this body did approve.
Thank you. Again, I do have some very serious concerns when three of your board members, and right now, you've, you've only got a six-member board, and we will work on getting you the additional members. But I'm also very concerned regarding the membership and the makeup in the, in the current ordinance. We looked at ethnicity also, and hopefully, we can balance that board out based on the makeup of the population of Albuquerque.
President, Counselor Sanchez, certainly, we, we're supportive of you meeting the, the guidance set forth in the settlement agreement as far as reflecting the community, and we are in full support of that.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor, Counselor Benton?
Or, Mr. Chair. I would like to ask probably our staff or our city attorney, this is listed, I think, on, on our, some of our documents here as a confirmation. Isn't this just an approval of a contract and not a confirmation of Mr. Harness?
Mr. City Attorney Aguilar.
Past President Sanchez, Counselor Benton, no, the ordinance sets forth the procedural requirements for how the, how the confirmation or reconfirmation is to be accomplished. It does, it does not speak in terms of contract, and what we learned last week was that that was mistakenly routed to the council under.
Under a renewal of contract.
The contract was submitted to the council, yeah.
So, I just, you know, I wanted to be clear, I wasn't under the impression that we were in the business of confirming, but I guess it is, it really is. The renewal of a contract is a confirmation of, of this position. I, I, maybe I'm too involved in semantics on this, but, but, so I was like seeing two things on the, on the OC, was renewal of a contract, and then, but we're also all talking about a confirmation.
That's why I made that statement, that the council's authority in this matter is limited to confirmation of the CPOE, CPOE director per the, per the recommendation of the Police Oversight Board.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Harris?
One more question, at least I hope it's only one more. Mr. Aguilar, if the changes go through of the amendments to our ordinance, I think what is sort of contemplated, although it hasn't been completely fleshed out, would be the, the board would just give us like a receipt, be noted, this, this is what we've done, and it would sort of take us out of that. Is that your understanding?
Past President Sanchez of, past Vice President Harris, that's correct. I mean, that would be our recommendation, but that's still being discussed as part of the amendment process.
Yeah, thanks.
No further questions? Let's go ahead and vote. We have a motion and a second on the floor for the approval of the confirmation of Mr. Edward Harness. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. No? That carries on an eight-to-one vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harness. We are now under final action. Counselor Benton, R-87.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move I do pass on R-87. This is amending R-17233 enactment number R-2017095 to extend the effective date of the interim procedures while the Neighborhood Association Recognition Ordinance is updated. I move I do pass.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Borrego, and it looks like we also have an amendment, and that is going to be Counselor Harris?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'll go ahead and move floor amendment number one.
We have a motion and a second for floor amendment number one. Did you want to read that into the record?
Sure. Our floor amendment number one is on page two, line 11, insert the following, section two, in section two of R-17233, enactment number R-217095, on page two, line 21, add new paragraph four as follows. Notwithstanding the foregoing of pilot program during the pendency of this resolution, New Mexico nonprofit corporations may sign up for notice through the Office of Neighborhood Coordination so long as the following criteria met. The corporation is in good standing within the New Mexico Secretary of State's office. The corporation has a charitable community purpose other than or beyond any typical association, associated with a recognized or non-recognized neighborhood association, and the corporation identifies no more than one city council district of interest or sub-area of a district for purposes of receiving notification. The council, the council will consider the value and effectiveness of this program at the time of the updates of the NARR ordinance as contemplated by this resolution, and it will, at that time, determine whether to extend or discontinue this opportunity for nonprofit corporations. What this does, counselors, is just to allow nonprofit corporations who may be charitable in their outlook and what they do to just receive notice. It is written in a way that it seeks to still discourage the, the further development of new neighborhood associations, whether recognized or unrecognized, and development of more coalitions or, or coalitions of coalitions. So, I think it tries to thread a needle with what Counselor Benton was doing, but at the same time allows for some other organizations within the city just to receive notice.
Counselor Benton?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I oppose this motion, and I think, I would like to have Ms. Morris at least introduce what this bill is about before we start. I, this is, first I've known of this, but, but it, it seems to be entering into the grounds of what we're trying to do with this whole process. This is just an interim set of rules, and so, to be expanding the notification and expanding the, any sort of recognition, which includes notification of additional groups, while we're trying to sort out the actual ordinance itself, is bothersome to me. But, but really, I'd like the counselors to hear what the bill is about, and, and just to remind everyone, this is because a timeline was running out, and we needed to give more time for the consultant to do their work, but if you would, please.
Ms. Morris?
If all right, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Mr. President, Counselor Benton, thank you. So, R-17233 last year established some interim regulations for the narrow, the Neighborhood Association Recognition Ordinance, while the council was working on a neighborhood engagement. While the council was working on a neighborhood engagement process, this involves a consultant reaching out to every one of our 263 recognized and non-recognized neighborhood associations in the city to, to speak with them about how the, the narrow, the Neighborhood Association Recognition Ordinance works for them or doesn't work, and, and how that ordinance could be revised. And the, the interim procedures that came with the regulations last year cover basically three base, three areas. So number one, no new, no new association or proposed boundary expansion for an existing association shall overlap with an existing association. Number two, should a proposed new association or proposed boundary expansion for an existing association contain an area that overlaps with the boundaries of an association that was previously active within the last 12 months, the inactive association has the opportunity to reinstate their active status before the proposed new association or boundary expansion will be approved. And number three, any new association must adopt bylaws that in their entirety promote an inclusive, democratic, and representative association. So these three interim procedures were really designed to focus on making sure that there weren't overlapping boundaries within different associa- within areas. So the, the bill tonight gives us an extra year to the timeframe. And so the, the R-17233 was set to expire January 1st, 2019, which is actually awfully soon. And so this would extend it out to January 1st, 2020.
Mr. Chair, if I could continue. So, thank you for that clarification. I'm not opposed to, to this concept in any way. We just tried to keep what we're doing with, moving forward with the, the ordinance and where we're going with it on a very simple level. And this bill is really just about extending a deadline. So I don't think it's the right venue for this, and that's why I, I oppose. Thank you.
Counselor Harris?
Thank you. And I remember when Counselor Cadigan proposed amending our Neighborhood Recognition Ordinance to put that homeowners' associations can receive notice, and that thing passed unanimously. The attitude was like, well, why not? Why not allow people to have notice? And some of the organizations that I'm thinking of, there's one in my district that's interested now, but we also have the Barrett House, which is in my district. I mean, that's a nonprofit, and they might be interested in seeing what developments are happening near them. There's also Counselor Davis's district. There's, you know, the Indian, was that, yeah, those guys who are, are help, helping out by, you know, stepping forward and agreeing to sponsor tiny homes. So they might be interested in seeing what other developments happening, just getting notice. So this just gives nonprofits a notice, and, and I understand that we've already kind of delayed the ability of anyone to do that for a year. So I think that we should just open it up a crack, not just to have nonprofits, but still stay true to, I think, the purpose of this, which is don't have more neighborhood associations cropping up because they can't be competing directly on sort of neighborhood, what they perceive as neighborhood governance, and although it's not really what their job, but sometimes I think it is, and not having that kind of competition until we sort this out. So I, I think this is fine.
Counselor Jones, then Counselor Gibson, then Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know I'm very slow sometimes, but I can't see why we're doing this. If we're going to open it up to the world, why don't we open it up to the world? And what is, I mean, there are nonprofit corporations that sell Girl Scout cookies. I mean, why? What is the purpose of this? I'm sure you have a specific purpose. Do you want to tell us what it is? Or, I can't support this. I mean, there's a point where we need to slow it down and take care of what we're really trying to do here. So I, I cannot, I don't get what you're trying to accomplish here.
Counselor Harris? Well, if, if a Girl Scout troop wants to sign up for notice, I don't think they would. But if they do, then I think that's fine. So if there are charitable organizations like the, like, what's the organization? And I, I don't want to misstate what their name is, and you're-
Counselor Davis.
Albuquerque Indian Center.
Albuquerque what?
Indian Center.
The Albuquerque Indian Center wants to receive notice. It's a bona fide nonprofit, and it has an interest in being notified of what's going on. So there's a organization in, in my area where they're working with a, a local school and refugees, and they, and they just want to, so that, that's the sort of thing they're interested in. They want to receive notice.
Counselor Gibson, and then Counselor Davis.
And they've already had a wait a year.
So, um, yeah, I, I mostly, I agree with what Counselor Jones said. She makes really good points, you know, let's just open it up to the world. But really, I mean, any business, any nonprofit, any non-residence can join a, a neighborhood association. So, and I would encourage them to. I think we all were. It only makes sense. So, but I don't think that, I, I think there might be a place for this, but not here.
Counselor Davis?
I think we've hit this on, and I think my friend here from the Heights has sort of made that point. I, I'm not sure that I feel comfortable giving nonprofits the right to sign up or expand their authority or ability to do this while we're restricting that of the recognized neighborhood associations. As your example, Counselor Harris, I appreciate it. I'd like to hear more about the specific group or something you're working on here. It seems like it's targeted for something that we're not talking about. But the Albuquerque Indian Center, for example, is a member of the Neighborhood Association, and so they participate in those conversations through the duly-recognized group. But it's not a bad idea, but certainly, I think this should be a part of the public conversation and not a, a last-minute amendment to this process, at this moment, anyway. Certainly, in terms of what it might tax our staff in terms of the additional in, incoming amount of applications or notifications without the proper budget or staff support that might be required here. I think it's probably something we should continue and expedite this process to figure out these rules with Counselor Benton and include this there.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for floor amendment number one to R-18-87. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed?
No.
That fails on a seven-to-two vote. We're back on the bill. Counselor Benton?
Counselors, I, I would just say that- That I, I wish we were moving faster than, on this with the consultant, but I think they've done some really good work. I mean, the good news is, the bad news is they're, they're behind what we thought was going to be the schedule, not their schedule, but our own schedule. And, but they, the good news is they've done a lot of contact, they've made a lot of contacts with neighborhood, neighborhood leaderships. Have, have, if you look at what they've come up with so far on this Phase Two of the project, it's really interesting. And so I, I urge you to take a look at, at their findings, but, but they're interesting, and, and some of them are surprising, but others are not. You know, the fact is, some neighborhood associations have leadership that's been in place, the same leadership has been in place for 10 years or more. Others rotate much more often than that. So there's all, they come in all shapes and sizes, and that's what we're trying to get down to. There's no intention to, to make major changes, really, to the ordinance, but in the meantime, we wanted to really reach out to a broad sampling and, and see if we can come up with some things that will simplify our job since we have the, the ONC under the council office now, but also make sure everyone has a chance to, to be recognized and be notified. And again, I don't oppose this, what Counselor Harris is interested in, and, and there's no reason he couldn't come forward with a, an amendment during the time that we're doing this and, and have that debated by the council.
It sounds like you're closing, but I'm going to, Counselor Borrego, request the floor.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask if at our next meeting, the schedule for how this is moving forward and the timeline could be presented to the council?
Mr. President, Counselor Borrego, yes, we can certainly provide that for you.
Thank you. I, by the way, worked on the first Office of Neighborhood Coordination ordinance, so, with Mary Lou Haywood spells and Lee Hammer. So you guys are supposed to say, you don't look that old, but.
You don't look that old.
Okay, Counselor, Counsel President Penya.
Thank you, Mr. President. I didn't know we were actually going to closing, but I just wanted to say in reference to Counselor Harris's amendment that didn't pass, you know, I really think that it's important that we do look at something about public notice for other entities outside of neighborhood associations, because I think the reason we're here extending this and, and really trying to navigate and figure out how to have a, a good, the, to adjust the regu- resolution moving forward, you know, even with homeowners' association, I get a lot of constituent calls because people are even confused with the difference between homeowners' associations and neighborhood associations. So, you know, part of me feels that I'm not sure that even that should belong under the Neighborhood Recognition Program, but, so I, I would ask Counselor Harris just to really consider looking maybe at a public policy, public notice policy moving forward in terms of just addressing other folks. So, thanks.
Okay, Counselor Benton to close. We have a motion and a second for approval of R-87. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed, say no. That carries unanimously. Or that carries not unanimously, carries on an eight-to-one vote. We are now on item B, Counsel President Penya, R-103.
Thank you, Mr. President. R-103 is amending R-1882 to extend the deadline for convening a microenterprise development fair to provide adequate planning, outreach, and coordination. We have Jeff here, he can answer any questions. But really, all this is, is extending the deadline. We were, we had put in the original resolution that we would have conducted it by the end of the year. Obviously, with the holidays coming and everyone really busy on lots of things and wanting to do this in a really mindful and thoughtful way, it's extending it to June 30th?
Counsel, Counsel President, Counsel Penya, no, that's going to be extended until April, yeah, the end of April.
Yes, thank you. Jeff, do you want to add anything else?
Thank you, Counselor. I think more than anything, we just want to be sure, as, as you already stated, that during the holidays where we have a lot going on, and we want to be sure that there's enough chance to do adequate outreach and to work closely with Economic Development Department to be, be sure that the fair is as successful as we possibly can, so.
Thank you. I urge your-
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second for R-0103. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed, say no. That carries unanimously. We are now on item C, Counsel Benton, R-98.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. R-98 is declaring the intent of the City of Albuquerque to issue Metropolitan redevelopment bonds in an amount not to exceed of $20 million, $500,000 in connection with the Broadstone Highland North Project. I move a due pass.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Jones. Are there any questions from this council? Seeing none, Counselor Benton to close.
Just real quickly, this is the project adjacent to Presbyterian Hospital. It's been in the works for some time now. And this, of course, the repayment, as with all of these types of bonds, is completely on the, on the developer and their responsibilities. So the city's not at risk in that sense. However, there are some property tax abatements connecting with the issuance of these bonds, but I urge your support.
We have a motion and a second for approval of R-98. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed, say no. That carries unanimously. We are now on item D, Counselor Jones, R-104.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is adjusting fiscal year 2018 appropriations for certain funds and programs to provide for actual expenditures and adjusting fiscal year 2019 operating and capital appropriations. I move a due pass.
We have a motion and a second for approval of R-104. And it looks like we have an amendment. Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd move floor amendment number one to R-18104. For amendment number one, just adds, increase the amount on page three, line 17, to add $5,000 from unencumbered funds. The amendment adds $5,000 from FY19 available funds to provide sponsorship and support the Trumbull Neighborhood Association Homeless Services Initiative in the International District. It's a partial match of funds from pledged by Burnley County and APS for homeless efforts in that neighborhood.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for, for floor amendment number one to R-18104. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed, no. That carries. We have another floor amendment. This is Counseler Benton.
Mr. President, or Mr. Former President, does, does the last amendment we passed conflict with Counselor Benton's amendment?
No, this is for, his was for $5,000, I believe this-
And then there's another one here for increasing, isn't there another one for increasing council services?
And transferring money of $57,000. Counselor Benton, it's your amendment. Ms. Yara?
Yes, Mr. President, Counselor Harris, the First Amendment actually doesn't conflict. It's appropriating money from available fund balance for the $5,000. Counselor Davis's amendment, I meant Counselor Ben's amendment is using a different source of funding, and so it's not conflicting. Both amendments would increase the council services budget.
Thank you. Counselor Benton, go and proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll move floor amendment number two to R-18104. This states number one on line three, page 17, entitled Council Services, increase the amount by $67,000. On page three, line 22, entitled Homeless Support Services, decrease the amount by $10,000. And on page four, after line 25, insert the following, section five, the following appropriation adjustment is made to the capital program for fiscal year 2019 as indicated below, and the transfer from 110 to the general fund. So this amendment will reallocate $10,000 in funding for the Tender Love Community Center project from the Family and Community Services Department to the Council Services Department for ease of administration of the sponsorship funds. It also real allocates unused council projects funding for the Capital Acquisition Fund to provide for $20,000 in sponsorship for the Blue Portal, a philanthropic program of the Assistant League of Albuquerque, which provides opportunities, excuse me, to Albuquerque's senior artisans to display and sell their artwork through consignment arrangements, and also $37,000 sponsorship of the 36th Annual Gathering of Nations event to be held in April 25th through 27th, 2019.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for floor amendment number two to R-18-
Mr. President.
-104. Counselor Davis?
Could I just ask the sponsor very quickly? I appreciate the time here. The $37,000 sponsorship for the Gathering of Nations, I appreciate that. It's in our district. We want to keep, we worked hard with the old administration to keep that in Albuquerque. I just want to ask Ms. Yara, sort of, what, about the sponsorship, or what is, who's, what organization or entity is providing it?
Yes, Mr. President, Counselor Davis, so you're talking specifically the Gathering of Nations.
This $37,000 sponsorship, is it from council or other?
I, I believe the Gathering of Nations folks, I'm thinking it's the organization that organized as a project, has been making appeals to a lot of their counselors for sponsorship funding, and that's what this would cover. I know they were asking for a little more than we were able to put together.
Thank you, ma'am, and I appreciate that. And I, I certainly support this. I think it's important that we do that. I just want to acknowledge, and perhaps as we move forward in the grant agreement for this, ask and hope other councils would support us, moving this location from the South Campus at U&amp;M, where it didn't really have as big of a neighborhood impact Clayton Heights accepted, to the heart of the International District, imposed some serious security and traffic concerns on the neighborhood that the city has taken on without new funding over the past few years. And we've been developing some conversations with them about ways to compensate the city for those uncompensated costs. I support the sponsorship because I think it's incredibly important. The more people we get there, the more tax revenue we get to do that. But I certainly hope in that grant agreement, we can address some of those unbalanced new encumbrances that we took on, sort of on our own shoulders last year and continue to do. And APD has asked for some extra funding as well. So I'd like us to just have that conversation as we do that. But I'd support this amendment, and thank you.
Director Yara?
Yes, that sounds really strange, sorry. President Sanchez, Counselor Davis, I just want to clarify, so is it that you would like for them to instead pick up those costs, or still have the city provide those?
According, thank you, Mr. Director Yara. In our previous conversations, they didn't have the internal funding to support the extra city cost that they had previously been, you know, to add on to what they had reimbursed. I think it's important that the more money they have available to bring in more revenue, that we ensure that that conversation happens so that we don't just write a blank check, but that we also include some of their projections for future growth in our needs to accommodate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Penya.
Go ahead. Mr. Chair, yeah, and thank you, Counselor Davis, for pointing that out. And yet, with any of these contracts, there's certain city expenditures that we should acknowledge and list as part of our contribution to the success of an event. In this case, some of these necessary services that are ancillary to the event as, as-
inasmuch as it affects the neighborhoods in the surrounding area. So I think that's important to point out with any of these types of requests that we get. If the city's already pitching in, maybe not dollars, but resources, then we need to try to guesstimate the value of those resources and point that out.
Go and proceed.
Thank you, Pastor President Sanchez, counselors. I just wanted to point out that we do have a number of other ways that we're supporting the Gathering of Nations, and of course, we know this is a really important part of our sort of tourism ecosystem here in the city, and we want to support it. Since it moved to the state fairgrounds, it's been really difficult to capture data regarding attendance, and that's really important because some of the money that we use to support it comes from the lodgers tax and flows through the Hispano Chamber and through the American Indian Chamber. And so one of the conditions that we can work together with Miziata to include, if you'd be open to it, would be some requirements on collecting data on attendance and on the sort of multiplier effect that the event has in the city. We've also talked to them about security concerns, both that the state has expressed within the fairgrounds itself because they have a wonderful giving spirit of just sorting, sort of allowing people to come and go, which does necessarily lend itself to a high degree of security, including people who camp out on the premises there. So I would just ask that, as you move forward with the agreement, that we are able to work closely with Miziata and our Cultural Services Department and APD and the state.
Thank you, Counselor Pena. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor for amendment number two to R-18-104. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. We are back on the bill. Counselor Jones to close.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a due pass as amended.
We have a motion and a second on the floor for R-104 as amended. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. We are now on Item E, R-106. That is Counselor Benton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. R-106 is amending committee substitute R-1818 as amended by R-1856 to extend the deadline, another deadline extension, for a committee of public and private entities to conduct an analysis of the 2018 International Energy Conservation Code with the intentions to replace the currently adopted ECC. And I move a due pass and then pass.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any questions?
If we could have Ms. Schultz briefly explain this. Again, this has to do with the consultant having now completed their analysis, and it looks like it's a good analysis that can now be digested by this committee that we've created to comment on it.
Ms. Schultz, go and proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, Counselor Benton. R-1856 had extended the original deadline to December 4. The contract that we put together for the consultant took a little longer than we wanted to, and so that work wasn't able to be completed until mid-November. That would have only given the committee, had they convened already a couple weeks, to digest all that information and provide recommendations to the full city council. The committee is not...now that the report is completed, the committee is not scheduled to even have their first meeting until December 12, which would be, you know, long past that December 4 deadline. So this gives them a couple extra months, now that we have the report from the consultant in hand, to understand that information and provide good recommendations to the council. This extends the deadline to April 1, so they'll have a full three months to complete their work.
Are there any further comments? Counselor Borrego.
I'm just checking to make sure that the amount that was contracted out for remains the same. We're not giving them any additional money.
Mr. President, Counselor Borrego, this resolution does not entail any financial components. It's really about the work of the volunteer committee. The work of the consultant is done. Their contract is being closed out and paid, and that's in the past now. So this doesn't have anything to do with finances.
Thank you, Counselor Borrego. Okay, is there any other comments or questions? Counselor Benton to close.
Urges support.
We have a motion and a second for approval of R-106. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. We are now on Item F. That is Council President Pena, R-107.
Thank you, Mr. President. 107 is actually establishing a legislative budget and priorities for the City of Albuquerque for the 2019 New Mexico State Legislature. I move a due pass and...
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Davis. Go and proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, there's a lot in this bill. I've received a lot of calls from some of the press, really trying to make ends of our resolution. You know, it's really tough when we have a city that has so many tremendous needs. So, you know, I really want to thank Tom Menakuchi for helping me with this in terms of really kind of coming up with a way to identify some really significant regional projects that have impact, not just for the City of Albuquerque, but the region as a whole, that requires support from the state legislature, from other entities, so that we can work together to really address, you know, like the Triad Center and the expansion of the...I mean, the radios moving forward. And then we have also the neighborhood priority projects. These are projects that are important to the counselors, are important to our constituents, and those are all in there. And obviously, you know, putting it together and having this thing move forward to our legislators really can be so that we can move forward and try to advocate for these projects that are important in our community. I want to thank the administration, you know, working with you on this. It's really important. We hopefully will be successful in our request this year, and I just urge your support.
Well, we can't go to that yet. We've got some amendments. Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I appreciate your support for this. I'd move floor amendment number one to R-18107. Floor amendment number one, on page three, line 25, after the word "house", inserts a period and deletes the remaining part of that sentence. This is related to supporting a youth sports complex currently being led initiative by Burnley County. The county's still considering a number of sites, and so we just propose to remove the reference in our amendment to the site specific until that report and that analysis is complete.
We have a motion and a second, and I'd like to make a couple of comments on that. I do support the amendment. I have worked very closely with the chairman of the county commission, Stephen Michael Casada, along with Commissioner O'Malley and Commissioner Hart Stebbins. And right now, we're looking at two locations, Albuquerque's West Side and also Mesa del Sol. I know that recently, the developers on the West Side are committing to additional acreage to meet those obligations and the needs that we are looking at for this multi-sports complex. But again, there's two locations that are being looked at. There's a study that has just recently been completed, and I think we need to work in collaboration with the county where we can leverage our resources to get a sports complex built. Okay, we have a motion and a second for floor amendment number one to R-18-107. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That carries. Okay, we have Counselor Pena, floor amendment number two.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is one that I don't know that I want to submit it as an amendment. I think I wanted to have some discussion on it. Tom, it has my name on it. I apologize, that was probably my mix-up. But this is just a discussion. P&amp;M had offered up this as a amendment. I had actually said that I would toss the amendment around. I'm not sure how anyone feels on it. So I would actually read the amendment, and if there's a motion, we'll proceed. If not, we won't.
Madam President, do you want to move the bill so we can discuss it?
Sure.
And I'll second it, then we can...
Sure. This would be floor amendment one...
Floor amendment number two.
Two. On page nine, line 12, after the word "house", insert the following, "reliable", and on line 13, after the word "projects", insert the following, "and responsibly transition to coal-free energy while minimizing community impact." The explanation is, this request is from a member of a coalition of diverse stakeholders working on energy policy for the upcoming state legislative session, and proposed resolution language would help the coalition's effort to move forward with a coal-fuel-free future.
I will second that motion for discussion. Is there any discussion? Counselor Davis?
I promise I won't do this one, everyone. Thank you, Counselor Pena, and I appreciate the chance to talk about this earlier. Very quickly, I'll just say, I would oppose the first part, which is, it sounds simple, but adding the word "reliable", that's generally been an energy concept. It's generally been code for increasing the use of natural gas, and I think that the city has not necessarily taken a position on that in the past. I think the legislature and the PRC have not necessarily taken a position on the future of the state's energy mix. And quite frankly, the City of Albuquerque, both with the initiatives we started last year at this council and with the new administration, are moving us to a 100% renewable option. And so I might argue that that's not necessarily in line with the rest of our options, and so perhaps P&amp;M should argue that with the legislature. As for the other, I fully would support the line of responsible transition to a coal-free energy future. I don't understand the caveat they put on minimizing any community impact, and so I might suggest that we just amend this thing to say that the city supports responsible transition to a coal-free energy future.
I would take that as a friendly amendment.
Counselor Harris?
The closing of the coal plants is going to devastate the economy of the... or could devastate the economy of the Four Corners area. So I think that's what that means, and I oppose the amendment.
Okay, Counselor Gibson?
Thank you, Mr. President. And certainly, a drop in 10% of the GDP over the next several years is going to have a pretty bad effect on the economy as well. So I think, you know, the timing is just really not good on this, given the recent report.
Okay, are we debating the amendment to the amendments right now?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? We have a motion and a second on the floor. I guess that would be amendment number one to amendment number two, correct?
Or she took it as a friendly amendment, Mr. President. However, you want to...
Okay, let's take it as a friendly amendment.
If I ask maybe the sponsor to just restate that friendly part?
Do you want to restate that?
I'll let our staff repeat the friendly part.
Maybe I could try. I believe, Madam President, I think what we're looking at is simply that on line 13, after the word "projects", insert the following, "and responsibly transition to a coal-free energy future."
I think that clarifies that.
Is that right?
Okay, we have a motion and a second for floor amendment number two. Mr. Menakuchi.
Mr. President, I need to make an...there's a cut-and-paste error on the amendment. Also, while we're at it, the word "house" should be the word "two", on line 12, yeah, on line 12, the number one after the word "two" instead of the word "house". Are you making it out now? Okay, okay, thanks.
Okay, let's go and proceed. We have a motion and a second on the floor for floor amendment number two to R-18-107. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes. Yes? That has five votes in the affirmative. Those opposed, raise your hand and say no. That carries in a five-to-four vote. We are back on the bill. Counselor Pena to close.
Thank you, Mr. President. As I said earlier, I just appreciate everybody's input on this, and I think we have to move it forward and I look forward to working with our legislators. I urge your support.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor for R-107 as amended. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. Okay, those raised, and said no again, please? That is a bill. All those opposed say no. That carries in a six-to-three vote. Okay, we are now on the last item on the agenda. That is R-108. That is Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Former President, or Chair, I should say. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And what this does is just appoints a new member to the...to a PIT board, Republican improvement district board, because one of the directors resigned. So I move R-108.
We have a motion and a second for approval of 108. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. And at this time, I would like to happily turn the gavel over to our council president, Counselor Pena.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I just want to thank you all. I really appreciate the faith and confidence you put in...put in me to elect me as president for this coming year. I just want to say that I neglected to thank my husband. I thanked everyone else, my kids and everyone. I always forget my husband. He's going to kill me. I just realized it while mid-meeting. I must have went blank. But, you know, I want to thank him. You know, I'm a handful to deal with, so I really appreciate his love and support and obviously, the rest of my family. And then I also just want to congratulate the rest of the folks that were elected. You know, we have an all-women leadership here, and I noticed that the mayor actually recognized that as well. And I actually want to, again, you know, Sarita and Stephanie, us women, it remains the year of the woman. Thank you. With that, no other business. This meeting is adjourned.